I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask, is anyone else recording this meeting? Sign on if you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. We will now move on to special recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Several recognitions for this evening. The first one to congratulate Mr. Page, one of our school committee members, having been recently awarded the Lorraine Glick Nordgren Community Service Award by the Council on Aging. He received the award at a recent Thanksgiving luncheon at the senior center. So congratulations. It's very good.
Thank you.
Well done. Yep, absolutely.
I'd just like to say I got a proclamation from Senator Moore from the Senate House, too. And I'd like to thank him, too. And I personally really honor this award because it's, in my opinion, it's a people award. It's not really a political award. It comes from the people. And it's just great to be able to get something like this. I'm not somebody that really cares for stuff like this as far as getting the awards, but it just, this is one that means something personally to me. Not only that, but they named the senior center after a very, very good friend of mine. And I'm just honored to get it. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice job.
The next item is to recognize the members of the master plan team. And I actually, there are a few in the audience with us tonight. As you know, I shared with you recently, we actually held our, what we believe is our last meeting last night. We joined together at Swanson Road Intermediate School. Mr. Ringardt, as our chairperson, couldn't be here tonight. Thanked the committee, as did I. And as you recall, you first created this master plan team to really look at as part of the whole SBC process, but to look at our schools in general, to see what would be the best use of them. So Mr. Kowski actually led the charge when we went and did an assessment of all of our schools at the time, not the high school, to look and see which would be the best ones to keep online as we moved forward in terms of our educational configuration. From there, we split up into the education team and the facilities team. And I will tell you, it was a 20-member team, and we met regularly for the past several years. I think it was two or three December's ago that we first held our first assessment, walking through on a Saturday. And then ultimately, they came forward with you for two recommendations. The first one being that once the new middle school was built, to reuse that old middle school, now Swanson Road Intermediate, as an educational facility for all grades three to five. And then also to take offline, or recommend it to keep online, Packard, Chard, and Bryn Mawr as the other elementary schools. So an awful lot of work was done, and I thank Mr. Kowski, Mr. Hanfield, and Mrs. Lopez, who were in attendance, who were part of that team, but all of those members who couldn't be because they really did an awful lot of work. So just wanted to thank them.
Go ahead.
Would you mind if you name off the whole team? Would that be a problem?
I don't have the list in front of me. I could probably do most of them. We do have letters that are going to go out in recognition for them. If you'd like, I can have Mrs. Artin go and print it, and I could read out the names if you'd like.
I think it'd be good to read out everybody's name, not just a few people.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Do you want me to go back to that?
Yeah. Let's move along to the middle school.
So the next item to let you know, the middle school cross-country, for the second year in a row, both the boys and the girls were named the Swickle Cross Country champion. They had a meet in Webster back on end of August, October, excuse me. The boys were led by eighth graders Bryce Kennedy and Timothy Walsh, and the girls by sixth grader Caroline Messina, and seventh graders Mia De La Strido and Rachel Ulström. So a great showing, second year in a row, by the kids. The coaches were as excited as the students were, so congratulations to them. Continuing with cross-country, we have a tremendous standout there, a number of them, but Sarah Cavanagh in particular. She won the Swickle Meet, running 2.9 miles with a time of 18 minutes and 34 seconds. There were 65 girls who competed, and she finished a full minute and 39 seconds, ahead of the second-place runner, which is a pretty unique situation, with their average time per mile being six minutes and 22 seconds. So kudos to Sarah for that. Great work.
Excellent. Any comments?
It's quick.
Yeah, that's a good one. Yeah, great job to Sarah, and then thank you to the coaches.
I wouldn't want to be chasing her.
But it says a lot for our program.
It does.
Excellent. Moving on.
The next one is Mr. Al Jones. He was a former teacher and elementary principal, a longtime member of the Auburn Public Schools team for 37 years. He passed away recently. He was 90 years old. He is survived by his wife of 48 years, Carol, a son and daughter, three stepchildren, 12 grandchildren, and five great-grandchildren. He was a veteran of the U.S. Army, and his memorial service was held on Veterans Day in Royal Town, Vermont, where he made his home. So I'd ask that we could all join in a moment of silence for Mr. Jones. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Could we do a moment of silence for the people in Paris, too, please? I think we should have probably done that in the beginning, and I just didn't remember. I was thinking about it earlier today, and then I says, you know, I'm bringing up the meeting, and I just forgot about it. But if everybody wouldn't mind, I'd like to do a moment of silence for all the people that were killed in Paris.
Happy to do so. So we can join in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up. And to share with you the names of the team, as noted before, it was Mr. Rick Ringardt was our chairperson, Mr. Ron Proudie was our assistant, or our vice-chairperson, Mark Benall. These are in alphabetical order. Sean Bush, Joe Fahey, he is also here this evening, I missed you, Joe, sorry. Mr. Joe Hamel was part of our team. Casey Hanfield, Gail Holloway, Paul Potsky, Tracy Lewis, Susan Lopez, Joe Miller, Steve O'Toole, Patty Renner, Bob Tetrow, and myself. So thanks to each and all of them. And in fact, I'm seeing one here, Leanne Gibbrey was also part of the team, and Liz Gribbins had been when she was a member of the committee and had stepped down at the time. So thank you to all of the master plan team members.
Thank you. Any comments?
I'd just like to thank all of them, and anytime a community comes forward like that for something like this, it really means a lot to us as well as the children. And it's not something that's only going to be around for a few years. Some of the repairs that have been done to these schools and the new construction, we're talking about, you know, 30, 40, 50 years down the road that this stuff is going to last. So really, it's so meaningful that they come forward and help out like that. Mr. Kowski, thank you, and please pass that along to...
The committee, what you had originally charged the master plan team with, they have completed their work, so it's up to you whether you wish to dissolve the team at this point.
I would entertain a motion to dissolve the committee.
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion?
I think if they're ready to dissolve, then we should dissolve them.
Okay.
They've served their time.
Not only that, but they did a tremendous job.
They sure did.
Yeah, they definitely did.
Unbelievable.
Much appreciated. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, they're dissolved.
You guys are free.
Thank you very much. Have a nice night. We now move on to citizens' comments. I don't see any. I've been told that we need to have more citizens' comments, but I never see any citizens to comment, so so much for that. I would now entertain a motion to accept the October 26th and October 27th meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as a vote. And we now move on to budget presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With your permission, I'm going to go down here, along with Dr. Lozé and Mrs. Worsbicky. As you see, the leadership team is in attendance, so we'll be presenting part of our budget request tonight, with the remaining part coming tomorrow night. Is that all set? Okay. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to start the budget kickoff for the FY17 budget requests that we have for you. As you can see, our mission of strengthening connections through rigor, relevance, and relationships remains the same. The vision of the school district, and again, if you recall, back actually two years ago now, we assembled a group of 120-plus school and community representatives to design a new strategic plan. And one of the things that we did, and there were different processes that went throughout, the planning team continues to meet, having met recently just a couple of weeks ago, to really be sure that the mission and vision that we set at that time do continue to really capture the essence of what we do in the Auburn Public Schools. And I'm happy to say to you that they do. The vision being to prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. At that same time, we looked at our core values, because if we do things correctly, we should be asking ourselves and always going against our core values. Is what we're doing, is the decisions that we're making, the purchases that we're requesting, do they abide by these core values? And obviously, what you will see this evening, I think will resoundingly, you'll be able to answer yes. Our expectations is that we have high expectations for all, that our decision-making be focused solely on students, that our environments are safe and respectful, that we look at data to determine what it is in fact that we need, that we provide equitable opportunities, and always be dedicated to continuous improvement. Our goal of educational excellence, we believe, can be accomplished if we really adhere to the mission, vision, and core values. So as we've done since 2008, those core values really did drive our decision-making. And we continually ask ourselves the question, how will this impact students and their achievement? Obviously, our goal is to answer positively on both. We started this process in looking at priorities that had been set both by yourselves and the leadership team. And these are ones that have really remained consistent over the past several years. In terms of class size, there's a recognition from the school committee, as well as the leadership team, that we need to have appropriate class sizes for our children. The requests before you this evening will reflect those expectations that you've set, keeping below 25 at the elementary and maintaining appropriate ones at middle and high, and those do vary based on classes. Student safety is paramount. Everything that we do in terms of maintaining safe environments, it was several years ago that the school committee first put into the budget a school security and safety line, and that continues, and you'll see that in there today. Without a safe environment, our students cannot, nor staff, truly work, learn, grow, and thrive to their potential. Student achievement, you will hear this evening in some presentations, as well as tomorrow night, our commitment to continuous improvement and educational excellence. You're going to see evidence of that work that's actually happening, and we believe in the budget that's coming before you, that it will allow us to continue to move in that forward direction with the momentum that's been built. Additionally, technology is a huge priority in the district, and thanks to our CIP, our school choice funds, grant funds, as well as the FFNA, the furniture fixtures and equipment money from Auburn Middle School, we now have in place a one-to-one iPad initiative in grades six through 12, with a one-to-two environment at our intermediate school, and additional multiple iPad carts, at least, I think it's one per grade level at the primary schools. Textbooks, it's incredibly important that we maintain current textbooks. You will know that between last year and this, that we have a new mathematics series in place, it grades kindergarten through eight, and you'll see when Dr. Lozé presents a request for English Language Arts textbooks for the elementary level. Also, as we do regularly, purchase replacement tests, and if additional advanced placement classes are added, we'll need textbooks for those as well. Professional development, we have a high-quality professional development program across the district. And just as we expect our students to continually improve and try to create the supports for them to be able to do so, we also believe that we need to continually provide support to our staff so that they can maintain their own professionalism and the high standards that they have set. The strategic plan implementation, as noted before, and as provided to you in a recent meeting, the goals and initiatives within the strategic plan, we have already accomplished numerous of them, and we're well in line based on the current progress that's being made to be able to accomplish all of those moving forward. And then finally, the educator evaluation. The Auburn Public Schools team continues to be a leader in this. We have embraced each section, we work and will continue to with our EdaVal team that's representative of teachers and administrators from across the district. And we've really kept the focus on what I believe and what we believe to be the most important thing, is how is this going to impact teaching and learning? We want to have rich discussions around that, and then obviously, we need to comply with the expectations, but it's really been, that's been secondary to the whole issue of how are we actually supporting children and teachers. So some assumptions that were made in the development of this budget, as we've done in the past, we've used the October 1st counts. Now, that's the official number that we present to the Department of Education, all districts do, but even since then, we've seen some minor adjustments, but you'll see October 1st counts. We have used grant funds, the Special Education, one of the 240, Title I and Title II, as well as offsets in Medicaid for $110,000. If you remember, we just got approved it for our special town meeting, which was actually a reduction that you took. You'll see that that has been applied against the operating requests. Circuit breaker reimbursement, we're anticipating that to be at 60%. All of our current IAs and ABAs have been noted in their current assignments right now, but as you know, there'll be movement among them because they follow students and based on their needs. And also, we've budgeted for 11 regular ed school buses, based on what we put in place this year. We added that regular education bus, so assuming numbers remain the same, we will need that. We will, as we did last school year, we'll do a survey again, and if anything changes on that, we can certainly make an adjustment. In terms of the middle school and high school that both have school choice, we looked at their projected number of students as compared to now, and as you can see, it's, this all assumes no children move in or out, and there will be children who will move in and out, but we have to pick a data point. Currently, there are 20 students at Auburn Middle School and 41 students at Auburn High School, and we believe with the numbers projected that we can maintain those levels, but I wouldn't be asking for an increase. We have utilized offsets in all of our revolving accounts, building rentals, satellite, Galaxy, even our preschool one, and athletic revolving. And we did make an assumption, we used an $80,000 offset for $100 per student to ride the bus. So moving forward, tonight you'll have presentations, the central office team will present, as well as the director of Fine Arts and Athletic Directors. And then tomorrow night, our principals will do their presentations, followed by a budget summation. As you know, and Mrs. Worsbicky will speak about it a little bit later in the meeting, the budget kickoff was held on November 4th, and so we got some direction from the town. But as we always do, we'll put the FY17 budget on the December 2nd, 16th, and January 6th meetings, the agendas, and that way we can have discussion regarding them. We do have an obligation to submit to the town manager Jacobson by January 11th, and I'm confident that we'll be better as we have done. So before turning it over to the team to hear specifically what their requests are, we'll just again remind you and reiterate that we are a district committed to educational excellence and continuous improvement, and we commit to continually putting our students and their achievement first in all of our decision-making. In closing with a quote by Vince Lombardi, perfection is not attainable, but if we chase perfection, we can catch excellence. And I think that you'll see in the budget presentations tonight and the accomplishments that I think we certainly are inching forward towards excellence each and every day. So without further ado, I will invite Dr. Lozé to the podium, who I believe will be kicking off the central office team. Here it is. On my hands probably both.
So good evening, everyone. Tonight and tomorrow night, you will hear about our many, many accomplishments, as well as our plans for even greater improvements in new initiatives. I believe, after hearing all of us tonight and tomorrow night, a picture will be painted of an extremely high-performing district, as you would all agree to, but one which is never satisfied to rest on its laurels. As you know, though, that the level of work that we do in Auburn here is never accomplished by a single individual, but rather, it takes an entire team. So we are all here together this evening, and we'll be here again tomorrow evening as a team. Some to present, some tonight and some tomorrow, and others to support our proposed FY17 budget. First on the agenda this evening is the central office budget, which includes the business office, teaching, learning, and curriculum, the office of people services, facilities, and technology. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Worsbicky, our business manager, who will provide some overarching context for our budget proposals.
Thank you, Pat. Good evening, everyone. Okay. It's a pleasure to be here. It's my first budget with Auburn Public Schools. I have to tell you, it was a pleasure meeting with the leadership team. They're a great group, very collaborative, collegial, very supportive of one another, looking, you know, the goal is the student first, every child first, and that's the way they approach this budget, and working together to try to accommodate one another and help each other where we could. They were very thoughtful in their budget, you know, projections and working together as a group, so it was really a pleasure working with them. So I'm going to go into the business and financial services section. Right now, we're thinking that state funding, Chapter 70 is anticipated to be level funded for fiscal year 17. We haven't had any specific indications saying that we're going to have any potential increases or decreases, so we feel it will be level funded according to last year. All of our revolving fund revenues are anticipated FY16 levels. We've used a lot of them, too, in offsets, as Dr. Brunell indicated. We tried to use them as much as we possibly could to offset budget. Our transportation costs for town busing are known. We signed it to a busing contract for three years. We just, we're fit, this will be our first year of year one. Next year, we'll have year two, so we do know our costs for busing for next year. The rates are determined as part of the contract for each of the contract years. So that was a good thing for us in projecting, we're able to project what our costs will be. We're not going out to bid, so we know what the cost is going to be for that. Personnel costs will increase as we plan for fiscal year 2017. That's a major theme in every school district budget throughout Massachusetts. Personnel costs are always increasing, but a good thing for us is that all of our major bargaining units have ratified contracts, so that helped us in projecting our salaries forward. We knew exactly where people would be, the ranges would be. We weren't, you know, a lot of districts are at the point where they're having to negotiate contracts, and so we were good in that respect, that we already have that done. So it allowed for concrete projections for us. The cafeteria workers were the only group that will require negotiations as their contracts as far as June 30th of 2016, but the cafeteria, the food service department has their own separate budget, so that doesn't impact our appropriated school budget in any way. We continue, we're going to continue to use collaborative purchasing through French River Education Center and the Tech Collaborative, which provide procurement benefits. The French River, we use for a lot of our classroom supplies, some technology supplies. Actually, we've also used them for fuel. One good thing to note, we were very pleasantly surprised through going through the French River, they just did their fuel bid for oil. And we were predicting in the budget previously that we were going to go at $3 a gallon, and we were pleasantly surprised that it came up to 1.74 for the price. So yeah, we were able to reduce our fuel lines in three of our school, three of the central office, Bryn Mawr and Swanson Road, who all use fuel, so that was helpful. And that's part of working together as a collaborative group where we can purchase and get better, you know, better prices for things. The Tech Collaborative is also a group that Mrs. King uses for food service. She's found them to be very, you know, helpful in a lot of the food items that she was able to purchase at less expensive prices. So those have all been helpful, and we do our best to try to save every possible way that we can. The obligated teacher retirement payouts, based on October 1st notifications, are contractual obligation per the AEA contract. Anticipated costs associated with degree changes are also based upon the October 1st submittals of individuals. This again is a contractual obligation per AEA contract. Some of our significant funding offset sources, and Dr. Brunell had kind of already mentioned some of these, but the circuit breaker, which is a state reimbursement for students with disabilities, is projected at 60% for fiscal year 17. That can vary from time to time depending upon what the state decides, but 60% is usually a good percentage to start out with a budget. You don't want to over-project, because there's a lot of times, there will be 9C cuts throughout the year, so 60% is a good range in most districts. I, you know, believe, use that as kind of a gauge. The federal grants projected from funding for Title I, Title II, and the IDA 240 grant. The grants, you know, we're hoping they'll be level funded every year. We have seen decreases from year to year, so those, we're hoping for them to be level funded, but usually, there's no increase in grants. Usually, they're stay steady or go down, so we're not looking at any increases in those. School choice, the reimbursement for enrolled students that are non-residents of Auburn is also a big factor in supporting our budget as well, so we're able to use those funds to supplement our budget and help out that way. Medicaid reimbursements, providing medical and therapeutic direct services to eligible and enrolled children, is also another big fund, and we're fortunate that the town, like, they just voted the money to give back to the schools to utilize, so that we're very fortunate that the town is very supportive of us on that matter. In the budgets, you'll see, I'm not specifically presenting any specific budgets here, but the total projected offsets for '16 and fiscal year '16, we had projected to use $2,588,000. And for 2017, we're looking at $2,105,546. So those, we've kind of put those throughout the budget, and we've tried to be as thoughtful and proactive about reducing our bottom line. So, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Lozé. Prior to presenting the actual proposed budget, I'd like to just highlight some of our accomplishments, as well as some of our plans going forward. I'm not going to read all of these to you, I'll try to pick out a few to really highlight. I think one of the biggest accomplishments this year was the purchase and adoption of a new K-5 Math program, which is called Go Math. Despite some initial challenges with some of the technology pieces, I think we're getting to a good place. I was recently told by the math coach that even our kindergarten students are taking their assessments on an iPad, so that's leaps and bounds ahead, and we've done really good about that. I mean, it's our second year, big ideas at the middle school, and we've also purchased a new text in grades nine to 12, so we feel like we're in a really, really good place for our mathematics programs. Another accomplishment this year is that we've actually worked with Renaissance Learning to get the opportunity of piloting Star Reading, which is an online assessment. We're going to use that at the middle school in grades six to eight with our at-risk students, looking to potentially purchase something going forward. We did recently create the LA Textbook Adoption Committee with the hopes that by March of 2016, we'll have identified the series that we want to go with and have that in place the next year, and that will be reflected in my budget, and I share that with you. We have a literacy assessment framework that we've been working hard on. Our summer curriculum work continues. We continue to initiate opportunities for our high school students. One in particular is to try to engage our students in some concurrent enrollment, presently with Quincydom Community College, but hopefully expanding that as we go forward. And this year, we will be administering the Access 2.0, which is the English Assessment Test, but this will be the first year that we'll be doing that online as well. Terms of professional development, which is critical to the capacity building of our teachings, again, we've provided training in the Go Math. We have offered three or four sessions already and continue to offer those for the rest of the year. We've spoken to you before about our co-teaching initiative. This year, we've actually trained some mentors, which will help us sustain that program and expand it as we go forward. We have EdTech Teacher, which is a company we've worked with for the past several years, but we've had them in again in terms of the growth of our iPad initiative. They've worked on Lulu Classroom. They've worked on the classroom, helping teachers understand how to create digital portfolios using the iPad. And that's usually, that's at a secondary level. We have also provided, we've decided to split specific training because all of our subject area teachers go to the same training initially and then they say, "Well, how does this relate to math?" So recently, we did it specifically for the math department at the high school, but the other departments have requested as well. So that's what we will be planning to do for the remainder of the year. This is our third year of offering sheltered English immersion at a no-cost auction through DESI. We actually have approximately 40 people taking it this year. When we are finished, we should have over 80 staff and is trained in the SEI at a no-cost auction. We continue to do applied non-violence recertification for our staff and we continue to look at, as Dr. Brunel said, the ed eval system and the DDLs. Some new and expected accomplishments going forward is to continue to provide training on the integration of iPads. We've done a lot of work with that at the secondary level and we hope to expand that down to our elementary levels going forward. We want to sustain our co-teaching initiative through the coaching model and then periodic reviews of the program and looking at data. We will continue our work with the Help Literacy. We have created a literacy action plan and we will see that implemented over the next few years. The Go Math training, as teachers request, we'll continue to do that. And the big one will be, once we adopt a new K-5 ELA program, that we'll need to provide substantial training in that. We continue to look at our March Day in terms of using in-house experts, but I also think that that's been expanded and it's used within the buildings, at faculty meetings and tapping our in-house experts. We continue to try to provide some training around our new software in the District Midas, which is our student information system, as well as ASOP, which is the new system we adopted for teacher absences and subcalling. We will start to work on some science alignment work. Once we, as I've told you before, once the standards are officially adopted by DESI, we'll be able to continue some work with that. We'd like to purchase additional STEM resources. I spoke about our pilot program, so we'd like to possibly purchase a computer-based assessment around literacy, but also maybe explore the potential for some assessments online, aside from just the program ones. In order to accomplish some of that work, this is the proposed budget. The Assistant Superintendent Supplies for FY 2017 is $1,500. The PD for the Assistant Superintendent, which is contractual, is $1,500. Assistant Superintendent's Publications at $300. Assistant Superintendent's Dues, $850. System-wide Classroom Supplies is $15,000. System-wide Professional Development is $140,000. System-wide Substitutes for a lot of the professional development that we provide is $20,000. System-wide Textbooks is $262,280. And this reflects the adoption of the new ELA program. Our current program is 2005 edition, which makes it 10 years old. It does not align with the new Common Core standards. It doesn't have the most current literature to keep our students engaged and interested. So we look to adopt a new one. Some of the quotes I have received, $200,000 plus for those quotes. Included in this amount is also textbooks throughout the district at the high school and the middle school as well. System-wide eBooks, $5,000 for a total of $446,130. And then to support our English Language Learning Program, translations remain at $4,000. Teaching supplies like decreased to $3,000. We hope to purchase a good amount of those at the elementary level. This year, we purchased some for the high school last year. Testing supplies is $1,000, travel is $100, making our total $8,100. And all of this, as I said earlier, is a team effort as well as your support, so I thank you for that. So I will now entertain any questions you may have about this budget before I turn it over to the next presenter.
Are there any questions?
I did have a couple of questions, mostly just about the figures that have gone up. Thank you for discussing the textbooks, not the number of textbooks. That's amazing. Now, what grade levels would this be supported, so that system-wide?
The ELA textbooks would be grades K-5.
Okay, so wow.
It's significantly different from a math program. It comes with a lot of leveled readers, a whole library of those. It's all those guided readers, it has a digital component, most of them now, so a significant purchase.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then just for system-wide classroom supplies, is any of that cost dedicated for additional tech?
Technology?
Technology that they're using, or is it just general supplies?
It's usually general supplies. A principal might come across when they have a new population, say if third grade is coming in and they've given their original benchmark, they may say, "Well, we don't have enough guided readers at a particular level, or we don't have enough nonfiction and fiction." So then they'll ask if we have some system-wide funds that could support that. That might be one example of how we would use that money.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, thank you, Dr. Lozay.
Now pass the baton to Mrs. Reedy, who'll give you the pupil services budget.
Thank you, Dr. Lozay. Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to review some of the accomplishments of the pupil services department that were completed with last year's funding. We have a very strong and viable co-teaching model, inclusion model in Auburn Public Schools, which supports our students with disabilities. Our new full-day preschool program is very successful and is a very much sought-after program. We were able to support more students at the high school through the hiring of a new special education teacher. Also at Auburn High School, we now, as equal with other departments, have a special education department head who is able to be a liaison between departments as well as staff members. Most recently, I came, come to you to talk about a unified sports program. And this past Sunday, some of our Auburn High School students participated in that bocce tournament at Westboro High among about 16 to 18 other high schools from across the state. And I was able to attend and it was really a wonderful experience and it really was a strong testament to our Auburn students and their spirit and their abilities and just how they connected with each other. It was students with and without disabilities on the same team and it was really a great experience and we were able to, you know, participate there. A few other things, we've adopted a new filing system in the pupil services office to streamline our documents as we get ready for Department of Ed to come in for our mid-cycle review in December. And we continue to partner with the Southern Mr. County Collaborative, Education Collaborative. Some of the, whoops. As we move forward, some of our goals for 2017. In this budget that we have, I've requested a new position of a board-certified behavior, Assistant Behavior Analyst for the district. Currently, we have one full-time board-certified behavior analyst, also known as a BCBA, who services students in preschool through grade 12. The BCBA in the district also provides support to teachers and to building principals. Over the past few years, we've seen a steady increase in the number of students on the autism spectrum here in Auburn, as well as a steady increase in students with social and emotional needs, who often require that support of a BCBA, either directly servicing that student or through consultation with staff members. A BCBA assistant will provide that much-needed additional support for students through, for the 2016, 2017 school year. As we look ahead to large numbers of students that we have transitioning between buildings and programs, but as well as the projection of more students requiring that support. We also look to continue that successful co-teaching model that we have of providing that instruction for our students with disabilities and an inclusion model. We'd like to implement the Rockets to Rockets program at Auburn Middle School. Currently, it is a program at Auburn High School that is a club that's designed to help students with and without disabilities form partnerships, lasting friendships. They attend weekly meetings and they also attend some social activities and we would really like to bring that to the middle school to have them start there too. We're always looking to bring home our out-of-district students, bring them back to Auburn to their own community. And we also look forward to continuing our Unified Sports Program partnership with Special Olympics. There is the opportunity to have a Unified Sports Spring Track Team that we're looking into having. And also in the fall, Special Olympics is now starting a Unified Basketball Team. So there are some great opportunities coming up for us to hopefully take part in that and have our students work together. Part of the budget, our district-wide positions, we are looking to move, which this reflects that new position, move from 13.2 full-time equivalents to 13.8 for a proposed budget of $948,661.95. And as we look ahead to this budget, our proposed 2017 for tuition to public schools, we have no students who will be going to a public school other than Auburn. Our non-public tuition, our out-of-district students, our proposed budget is $749,416. Our collaborative tuition, which are students that we have placed at our Southern Mr. County Educational Collaborative Schools, would be $139,014. Our homebound tutoring support, an increase to $25,000. Our contracted services would be going to $218,555. Classroom supplies at $12,000. Our special education transportation, our in-district transportation, we know that amount would be $266,760 to transport our students within district. Our out-of-district placement students, their transportation costs would be $200,000. Our homeless transportation is, we're looking to project it at $48,000. We've seen quite an increase in homeless students and the transportation of them from where they're placed or from where they find their place to get to school for a total budget of $1,668,745. Do you have any questions?
I just have a question through the chair. What is the homebound tutoring?
So we have students that are often, require hospitalization and we need to provide them tutoring support, so that's what that covers.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments?
The only thing I'd like to say, do you feel comfortable with your total?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know special, that is a real big deal and the state does, it's mandated and the state doesn't give you the money you need, but, and I see you've cut quite a bit here and there.
We have students that are graduating and students that are approaching the age of 22, so they will be aging out where they're not eligible for services. I mean, we, so that's, is reflected in much of that as well.
Okay.
One thing, if I can just add to that, when we make these projections, it's based on students that are known at the time. So if any changes are made or a student moves in, we'll certainly come back to you with adjustments on that. But we always budget based on students that we know currently.
It is difficult because it's that unknown. We could have someone coming tomorrow with some significant needs that we will support, so.
Thank you.
Can you talk about the new filing system and how that's improved things?
So what we did is we went to a five-cut system where we have five folders and we have certain, we put our IEPs, our reevaluation, so we separated out a little bit more. So it's much more readily if we or a teacher or, you know, when the Department of Ed comes in, they need to look at some information. They can easily go to a student's file and pull it out. In the past, it's been a large file and you have to kind of rifle through to find the information you need. This way, it saves time and effort because it's right there. And when they, when the Department of Ed comes in for this big review, it will be a better system for them to look at as well.
Are most of the teachers and support staff using these documents electronically or?
No, these are electronic. These are all hard copies that we keep on file here. All the original copies of testing reports or individual educational programs, letters from parents, correspondence, any of the forms that we use in our documentation. And we do have it online in our online eSped that we use, our data system. But these are all hard copies that we need to keep the copies originals on hand.
Thank you. Any other questions? Great, thanks.
Thank you very much. I'd like to now introduce Mr. Fahey for his presentation.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, all.
Well, thank you for inviting me here tonight. I'm here to present my 2017 budget. And as you look here at the picture, that's not me there, okay? Because I really don't know what that is. It looks like it's, I don't know, someone's juggling the three balls, right? Three plates, three hats. But I can tell you that there should be six of them up there because we have six buildings. So at any given time, our budget can fluctuate all over the place. If you look down the bottom, the triangle, it talks about the schedule. Well, the schedule that we do, we kind of do it around the students and the faculty of the buildings. So if there's a repair that has to get done, we do it either before school, after school, weekends, holidays, whatever it takes not to disrupt the classroom's learning. And if you look to the right, the triangle talks about performance. Well, the performance is, is myself and our custodians in the building. We kind of like to hold ourselves to a pretty high standard. We kind of do whatever's expected and then some. And when we bring contractors into our buildings, they see that and in turn, they bring in their A-game. So that kind of drives the cost down. So going into the accomplishments. Well, we all know we have a great new middle school and such a beautiful school it is. The next bullet, we have the opener of the Swanson Road Intermediate School. We got a little bit about that tonight. Again, these projects could not happen without the support of yourself, the leadership team, the community, to make this whole thing happen. So we're very proud of that. The third checkmark is the MSBA Accelerated Repair Projects. And we're very fortunate, as you know, we've gotten over 50% reimbursement coming back off of our capital that we've strategically done over the years to make this all happen. And, you know, before the school started, we still have a punch list going on, but for the most part, these jobs are actually complete and knowing that we're going to get that reimbursement rate. And the thing that people don't realize too is that on these particular two buildings, we've got, we have branded roofs, we have a 30-year warranty on these roofs. So plus we have a brand new school here, 25, 30 years on that. Our high school is 10 years old, we're in very good shape. So we're very proud of that. All that happened in this past summer. You know, we had to, we had to keep the ball rolling for Bryn Mawr School, so we did the sidewalk replacement in the playground up ground. These are actually already in our CIP projections to be done. So we had a lot on the plate, but we figured we had to give a little bit to everybody. That being said, pack-a-truck school, parking lot, replacement, playground upgrade. Very busy summer. So that being said, expected accomplishments for this year, I gotta tell you, it's going to be tough to beat. But, you know, we do, you know, as we do, you know, yearly, we provide regular preventive maintenance, capital improvements to all of the buildings. And we support the education of the students through a safe and healthy environment. It's kind of like Groundhog's Day, same thing over and over again. But you know what, we love it, we wouldn't change it for anything in the world. Okay, that being said, we go right into the meat and potatoes, the dollars. And I'm not going to read all these, but I will tell you that obviously the center column is what we're proposed, our proposed rates. And the column to the right is what we actually spent out last year. And the column to the far left is what we budgeted. So you see that the natural gas, you know, we're asking for a little bit more, slightly, not too much. Part of the reason for that is we did have an audit last year. We did, when we did our chiller installation at the high school, they also determined that, you know, we had to run the natural gas a little bit longer in certain other areas, not to keep the humidity, you know, at a certain level in certain areas of our building, mainly the band room, the locker rooms. So that's why you see a slight increase in that. The dollar amount for that, we've locked in, I believe it's $5.71 a decutherm, which is pretty consistent with what we were last year. So our electrical bumping up slightly to $200,000. So our electrical bumping up slightly to $200,000. Again, we're locked in at a pretty good rate through, through the French River, similar to what the town has done. And we've been doing this over the last five years, you know, keeping, going out to bed. This past year was, was awarded by Direct Energy. The third one is our water, you know, pretty much consistent. Nice thing about the high school, it's 10 years old. These numbers are pretty consistent now, now that we know the data. I'm not saying it's like clockwork, but it's pretty close. Our sewage, gotta say it, what goes in must come out. That's why that dollar amount's there. Only gonna say that once. Our telephone, slightly more, $10,000, not much. Our building repairs, we slightly went up on that, mainly for that because our warranties are expiring, so now we have to absorb that in our regular building maintenance. A good example of that is a variable speed drive unit, cost about almost $9,000 to replace. We're in the process of replacing one now. Our CIP is $10,000 or more. So therefore, we can't use our CIP for that, it has to come out of our operating. So custodial supplies, pretty much consistent. That's it for the high school. At our middle school, we have, unfortunately, we have no data available. We're going off of what the engineers estimate and we're slowly gathering our actual data right now. If you look at the first, our propane, we estimated $2 a gallon for, for liquid propane. We're locked right in for this year at $1.09. However, we don't know the volume of what we're actually going to be using. So that's why that number is, is where it's at. Our electrical, it's kind of steep, no question about it, but again, we're locked in, but we don't have the real support data to, to tell us what it's going to be yet. And another thing about that too is even though we're locked in at a, at a very low rate, there's still the, another part of the building that could actually go up. We don't want to be in the same situation that we were 10 years ago at the high school with the electrical bill and everyone's like, was shell-shocked, where we're going to come up with this extra money. So that's why we budgeted where we, where we are there. Our water, again, we don't have the data, but you feel like that's a very comfortable number. Same thing with the water going down to Blackstone. Our telephone's about $2,000. We're fortunate too that with this new school, we have a PRI switch that we're eventually going to be rolling over some other numbers from the other schools into that switch, so therefore, we'll kind of, you'll see that in the budget as we go on. Some schools kind of fluctuate on where we are with our, our phone bills. So nice thing about our PRI switches, we'll be able to take, I believe, 21 numbers, roll them over to that. So we really want to wait until after all the bugs are out of the middle school in order to roll that into play. Our building repair and maintenance, big jump from $10,000 to $75,000. Reason why we have a $10,000 this year, everything's a warranty, although they, not everything is supplied, they're unbelievable. You know, we get, there's nothing that we don't ask for that we don't get through the project. Fontaine and Skanska have been, you know, unbelievable to work with. However, there's still, there's still parts that, you know, they're not reimbursable. So that's why we stuck the $10,000 in there. But I know you're all asking, well, why are we going up to $75,000? Well, the warranties will now be over. So when the, well, we own now the boilers, we own now the HVAC equipment, the software for that. So that comes at a, at a high premium. We have state of our building, we're going to have to have state of the art maintenance here, so that's why that's, remember where that is. Our custodial supplies, pretty consistent. Again, we get all our custodial supplies through the French River custortion also, so it's a great, it's a great program. Even though our business manager just stole my thunder about the oil prices, but that's okay. We're really happy with these numbers because again, we projected $3, we're able to reduce these numbers down. And we're hoping too for a little bit more of a savings with these new roofs that we have. So we're hoping that number will come down a little bit more. But historically, the middle school, well, college middle school, I'm sorry, intermediate school was always about just under 20,000 gallons a year. So we're hoping to shave a little bit off of that. Our electrical, slight increase for that. Our water, pretty much the same, same thing with our sewage. Our phone, that's why I talked a little bit about that PRI switch coming in. We do have a lot more numbers that are over there as well, but unfortunately, they don't show it on this, on this slide. Building repair and maintenance, keeping it pretty consistent, $30,000. And custodial supplies, the reason why the far right is only $4,000 is we pretty much used up everything that we had last year. So moving forward, we're looking at $10,000 for supplies. Don't forget, two schools, historically, they were about $4,000, you know, a piece, $4,500. So those emerged into one. Package truck, same gas rate as the high school, it's pretty consistent. You see a big jump in the electrical. Part of that is because we're, we're, I'm just going to, the simplest way to explain it was we're underfaced over a package truck. We all know that we're in the process right now of, of upgrade, excuse me, upgrading our electrical service. We have a, we're, I believe we're on the agenda for early December?
November 23rd.
Not a good night. But, no, excuse me. So we have to go to the selectmen's meeting for that, for approval for the easement. Once that's installed, and Masilecik has already been there, they already trimmed down the trees up there, so they'll be doing, they'll be running a new service over to there. And our electrician will be working from there about connecting from the transformer into the building. Because what happens, obviously, when you're underfaced, it's, it's the opposite of what you think. You use more power. Use more power plus it's more strain on your equipment. So by upgrading the electrical, you feel that number, hopefully will come down a little bit, but just in case it doesn't, we want to keep that number where it is. The water, pretty much consistent, again, with the data that we have. Same with our sewage, our phone bill. Building repair and maintenance, if you see the column to your right, yes, we spent twice as much than, than we, more than twice as much as what we actually budgeted for. And part of the reason for that is, well, there was a lot of one-time expenses that weren't considered capital. We did upgrade our parking lot, but however, parking lot was considered CIP, but the engineering piece of it wasn't. So, so that had to come out of the building repair and maintenance. And there was a lot involved in the, in the, the engineering part of that project. It's, it's pretty detailed and tense. We had a hot water heater let go, we had some elevator problems, so it's certainly justified why it was so high. But we feel it was one-time expenses, you know, we're not going to carry that $40,000, you know, for our, for our proposed rate. Custodial supplies, again, pretty similar to what we've had in the past. Brenmore School, same thing, our oil is pretty much consistent as far as the gallons that we use, roughly 10,000 gallons. Electrical, slightly increased. Water and sewage, water's a little bit high, but that's certainly justified. And we do have, we do have tunnels in Brenmore School, unfortunately, and if the leak does happen, it's, it just goes down. So you really don't, you know, there's a way of, of knowing when you have leaks and we just have to be a little bit more mindful, but it doesn't leak onto the floor, unfortunately leak into the ground, so you don't see it. So that's why if you wonder why, geez, why there's an awful lot of water at Brenmore. So telephone is pretty low. Building repair and maintenance, again, look to the right, there was a couple one-time over our regular operating budgets that needed some repairs. We had some steam traps that needed to be overhauled. Again, if you don't repair your steam traps, what happens, you're basically throwing, throwing money out your window because now your, your oil consumption will now go up. So it was imperative that we took care of that. Custodial supplies, pretty much consistent. Central office here, a fuel, roughly, we use about the same amount of fuel as Brenmore. Our electrical, we had a tenant downstairs, you know, that probably raised their rates a little bit. If you look to the right, that's going to come down slightly, but again, we keep, we bumped that up just because of the potential increase that we could have. Our water and sewage, tenants next door takes care of that. And trade, and trade, actually, we trade off, we supply the electrical. We only have one meter to this building, so this meter services the fire department and in turn the trade-off is the water and sewage bill gets absorbed from the fire department. Pretty fair trade. Our building repair and maintenance, gotta keep the building running. Custodial supplies are pretty low. Again, we take advantage of the French River. Our district-wide support costs, Dr. Benel talked earlier about the security that we, that we implemented a few years back. Based on what happened this past, past summer with the upgrades at, at Ten Swanson, we, you know, we put a little bit more in there, build the security that way. That's why you see that, these are one-time expenses too. That's why we feel the, keeping the $20,000 is a pretty realistic, realistic number. Our equipment repairs and our system service contracts, we're bumping those up a little bit because we now have two, two modern buildings that the support costs is, is, has a lot to do with Mr. Moby here with his technology and also the building automation part of the two goes into that too. So that's why we see a little bit of an increase in that. Our truck maintenance, we bumped it up to $1,000. You know, it's getting up there in age, so there's, there's a few more repairs that need to be done. Our staff miles, we still keep the $2,000 in there. Unfortunately, if you look to the far right, our guys don't put in for it, but the one year I take it out, they're going to put in for it. I shouldn't say that, but we feel that we need to keep that in there, just as a placeholder. Oh, I'm sorry. There's supposed to be this slide saying any questions. If anyone has any questions, I don't have a quote from, from, from somebody, I'm sorry to say. But I, but I can tell you that, I can tell you that I think myself and my, my staff feels like they're Jerry Kramer and, and I think everyone here is Bob Star. So we do whatever it takes.
Excellent. Any questions, comments?
I actually have a couple of questions. Thank you, that was a really great presentation. I actually had a question about the phones at Swanson Road in Pec. And I'm not sure if this is actually going to be coming out of this year's budget or if it's going to be rolled in. We have a parent that works, a parent of children in the school that actually works for Horizon and she, she has offered her services and so we'll get replacing the system just for those two schools. Are we looking into that?
Yes, we are. Again, that's why I kind of talked a little about, about the PRI switch. And I don't really want to touch that until we're completely done over here, because if you notice in the beginning of the year, we had a couple hiccups with the phone system, so I don't want to go down that road yet. I, I have that parent, I, I have her number right on my computer. So as soon as, as soon as I come up through here, we'll be contacting her. I'm just bringing in more phone lines at Ten Swanson because we want to make sure that they answer the phones. So once we get that taken care of, I'll be more than happy to call that lady or any other one that can assist us in a PRI switch over there to reduce our, our phone number. So I thank you.
No, thanks. I mostly just wanted to make sure that, because I noticed that the, that the figures are pretty similar to last year, I just wanted to make sure that you're asking for all that you needed for, for much that would cost. So, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
The only thing I would say, comment is, you do a great job keeping up the schools and fixing things that need to be fixed. I'm surprised you do it at the, the estimate that you're giving us, but over the years, I've seen a lot of changes in the maintenance of these schools and I'm very happy with it.
Thank you. Again, it couldn't be done without your all support, my leadership team and the teachers. It certainly takes a village, as I'm told, and it certainly does. Great job, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Good evening. So I'm last in this particular budget presentation with technology. Very happy to be here to talk to you about everything that we accomplished this year because it really was a year in a summer like no other. And we did a lot, everybody did a lot this summer, from principals to facilities, they were amazing. And technology did a lot as well, so we're pretty proud of where we are. And we couldn't be prouder about that first bullet, our one-to-one iPad program is truly amazing for the, for the kids and the staff of Auburn right now. We delivered over 1,200 iPads over the first couple of weeks of school and tens of thousands of iPad apps to every kid in those grades. And they're being used every day. You can tell because when a kid comes to you with a problem, they can't leave it, they need it immediately. They're, they're not leaving it behind, they're not leaving it with you overnight, they need their iPad all the time. And we're seeing even better use as the progress, as we progress through the school year with more, more usage of online classrooms and, and better projects that are taking place. So we're excited about that. That also allowed us to take our, our current iPad inventory and separate it out of Swanson Roads. We were able to give them a card of iPads for every two classrooms, which in and of itself is an amazing accomplishment. And I would challenge you to find another school in the area that, that offers students of that grade level, that type of technology availability. We added additional iPad cards at Package Truck in Brenmore. And iPads are provided to every teacher at Swanson Road. Again, if they're, we're expecting them to use them in their class with that amount of one per every two classrooms, we need to make sure they have one in their hands. And teachers at Swanson Road were also given a new laptop. That was to facilitate the move from one building to another. We didn't want to move old, old electronics from JV and Package Truck over if we could avoid it, so we were able to purchase some new equipment and made our lives easier, gave them new equipment to work with. It was a win-win for everybody. Plan and supervise the technology for the new middle school. There's a lot of technology in that building, a lot that you can see and a lot that you can't see. And a lot of it, a lot of it is stuff we control, a lot of it is facilities nowadays. Joe's becoming more and more technological by the day as more and more of his systems and all the systems in the school come online and on our network. So that building brought with it a lot of challenges and a lot of systems that, that we didn't anticipate to be electronic, but they are. So getting through that was, was a big process and we're still going through it. And there, it's a new building and there are bugs, but we're ironing them out and we're really excited for what, what's happening over there. Repurposing a technology for Mary D. and Julia Bancroft, we don't leave anything behind if we can use it. So anything that's good, we've been moving and moved to new locations so that we make sure that everybody in the district is using the best technology possible. We'll leave the old stuff behind, but we moved all the new stuff, all the projectors, Wi-Fi access points, networking equipment, computers, all of that, moved to new locations to make sure that it's, that it's being used by our staff and students. Transitioning to a new student information system is a huge project, the website and the parent portal, which has become one of the most important things I do. I get more calls, I think, on that particular system nowadays than anything else with the parents looking to get in and having questions and really, really wanting that at the minute school starts. I mean, I wanted a parent portal, there's no, there's nothing in there yet. There's, they haven't had any homework, but we want it. So, well, we're excited about that. And I skipped over Park and there's a lot of news about Park, but that was a huge project, getting our students to take Park. And I'm actually pretty proud of that because the network held up, the devices held up, and I think our kids and our staff held up through this very, very trying time period. And the students I talked to seemed to be successful with the test. They seemed to enjoy it to a degree, as much as you can enjoy taking a test, but that mode of, of test-taking is clearly for some of them, a little more exciting than pen and paper and bubbling in circles. And if nothing else, if, if whatever becomes of, of this at this point, it's prepared our, some of our students to go ahead and move forward with taking online assessments. And as Kathy brought up earlier today, that, that's occurring with, with more and more of our curriculum projects. A lot of the assessments are online, so. And you're going to continue to see more and more assessments move online anyway. So it was a good model and, and I think we did really well through it. As we look at this coming year, our, our biggest goal is to keep that one-to-one program moving forward, keep the iPads in the hands of the students, make sure they have everything they need. keep the iPads in the hands of the students, make sure they have everything they need to be successful with it. Make sure that our teachers have everything they need to be successful with it. It was a big commitment by the district. We want to see it succeed. So far, we're really happy with it. But we know it will continue to get better and better as our teachers and our students become more adept at learning in that type of style. Supporting technology integration at all schools. We're always looking to make sure that our technology is being used to teach students. That is ultimately the reason why it's here. Not to say that we have the best stuff, but to make sure that our teachers and our students are using it for learning. Supporting the technology elements in the new math curriculum. Once again, everything that's coming into the district now is bringing an element of technology to it. The curriculum pieces are technology infused. That's new for a lot of people, our teachers, our students, and us. And they all bring certain challenges. And we work together as a team to make sure that we can get through them and be successful with them. We put together a technology committee this year. We met for the first time in November specifically to address the strategic plan goals around online learning, around student data privacy, around building a student-run help desk, some very specific initiatives. We have a broad base of people on there. We have some parents, staff, administrators. So we're looking to move forward with that. We think we can move the district even further forward with a little help from our community. Continue to improve our wireless network. It's the fastest-growing thing, I think, in the school is our wireless network. There are thousands of devices every day on our wireless network. It is frightening when you look at it. There's a lot of things. But it continues to hold up, but we have to continue to stay on top of it to make sure that when somebody turns on an iPad, a laptop, a phone, or whatever it is, that they've got signal and they've got enough connectivity to be able to do what they need to do. So we need to continue to monitor that, make sure that we have enough access points and enough bandwidth to support that. Focus on student data privacy and network security. This one has all of a sudden become a very big deal for us. And not that it wasn't before, but now we're looking at things in a new and interesting way as we see more of our systems go online. And we want to make sure that everything that we have on our students is kept safe and private and that our policies and procedures are also supporting that our students' data is kept private. So I mentioned that's part of our technology committee team and one of their focuses. And we're going to be focusing, I think you'll be hearing a lot more from me on that throughout the year. Provide timely technical support. Has to work when it has to work. And if it's not working, we have to make it work. And we do our best with our staff to keep everything running to the best of our ability and to support both the staff and students in every effort they make. So the budget, it's not very, very exciting to look at. I'll just call your attention to a few items. Computer supplies dropped. There's a very good reason for that. We underwent some very large projects last year, such as Park, such as the one-to-one project, such as the new building and renovating our old schools. We knew we needed a lot of support and things to make those projects happen. But those projects are over and we brought this number down to a number that reflects what we really believe we need moving forward throughout the year. Dues went up. That's minor, but it's just to support joining another professional organization to find even new and more exciting things to bring to Auburn. Computer maintenance continues to go up as well as computer contracted services. Those are always going to go up. Computer maintenance relates to service contracts on physical pieces of equipment within the district, firewalls, switches, servers, those types of things, content filters. We need more and more of those every year to support what we do. Like I said, the network is growing. Security, HVAC, one-to-one iPads. It's growing exponentially, so those numbers continue to rise. Also, some of those numbers are directly related to the number of devices that are brought onto the network. So adding 1,200 iPads in a lot of cases brings those numbers up. Computer software is actual pieces of online software or licenses that we use. Now, my budget holds most of those software licenses for the entire district. So this could be curriculum, this could be special ed, it could be technology, it could be facilities, it could be anything that's online. Those numbers come to me. Again, a lot of that particular jump was in direct relation to the one-to-one, supporting the management system, which is, the cost of that is directly related to the amount of iPads. The cost of content filtering them at home, again, it's based on the number of iPads and the need to buy apps. So we're buying apps for 1,300 or 1,200 iPads. That's a significant amount. So that's where that increase goes. I think it's a pretty modest increase considering the amount of technology that we brought into the district over this past year. So I'm pretty comfortable with where we are. And I can say that, you know, obviously, our students don't want for anything. So if we're comfortable with this, our students have the technology they need to succeed right now. On behalf of the central office, I'd like to thank you for your continued support. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Any questions, comments?
I just have a question regarding the path. I guess, what's the next step in the one-to-one iPad initiative?
One-to-one?
Well, I know we moved, we're in high school and we're moving down to middle school. What's the general timeline for rolling that out to the younger grades? Or is there?
I think it's safe to say our timeline is way ahead of schedule. We didn't expect to be one to two for a while. And really, the strategic plan called for us to research models for elementary. I think ultimately, you'll probably see car per classroom, but I don't know exactly when at this point. That's one of the things that we're going to have our technology committee look at. I think it's pretty neat to say that our last technology plan kind of ended at one-to-one. So we finished it and we're excited about that. So now we're looking forward as to where do we go now? We're bringing in that technology to committee to look at it. But our teachers are already clamoring for more technology. They want more, you know, one car per grade level is fine, but one for my classroom would be great. One for every two is fine, but one for my classroom would be great. So it's hard to say at this particular point, but we're going to keep moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a question through the chair. When they come out with the new hybrid tests that they've been talking about on the news, are you guys concerned that you're going to have enough technology to keep up with those demands? Do we even know what those demands are yet?
I would find it hard to believe that they would be any more demanding than Park. Park was pretty demanding on us. So we tested Park in every one of our schools, including the primaries, with the diagnostic testing, and we held up pretty well. So I don't think it's going to be any, it can't be. I mean, that was an entirely online test that required a...
Don't say it can't be. Because they will prove you wrong.
So I'd be shocked if it was any more demanding than what we've already gone through. And we handled that.
Okay, good. And then one more question. I know Mr. Casey has mentioned before that they have an appy hour at the high school. Is this time when the kids can ask for new apps and like the district pays for? Or how do those?
Apps, we're still working on a procedure for getting new apps. We've been pretty lenient, not through the kids, but through the classrooms. We restrict the iPads to only the apps that the district puts on them. We have control over that. We can push apps to individual iPads, to groups of kids, to everybody, at school, grade level, anywhere we want. The way that we've been handling it now is those come through the teachers saying, this app would really help my class and we'll put that in what's called a self-service app. It's almost like our own Apple Store. So it sits on the iPads. We put the apps in that. If the kids need it, they can go in and they can download it. We don't take app requests directly from students at this point. It would be unwieldy. And what we also find is that they load everything and they have no room for anything else. So it's part, we're going through the process of trying to make sure that they understand they only really need to have on their iPad what they need to use in their class. And also, because it's the first year for many of them, we don't want to overload them. We want to focus on specific things that they need to do to get specific tasks done rather than bombarding them with a lot of apps and making the process even more confusing than it may be to some of them.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? No, thank you, Mr. Bouvier. Great job.
I think I will introduce Mr. Pietrillo.
You think?
Well, he's supposed to be the athletic director, but he's not here yet. So we're going to give him a few more minutes.
This is going to be very brief.
Oh, yeah, they can't see it yet.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Cecilia mentioned earlier that this was her first budget presentation. This is my last. I'm smiling, you know. Fine Arts, Arts for All is kind of what we believe. Every child is exposed to music and art. Curriculum's concept and skill-based. We meet the mass frameworks. The national core standards for the arts have, I believe, they've just been accepted, but they've changed 100 times in the meantime. So we're still looking at them and they'll change before the next time, so we'll still look at them. And, what's, a slide missing, I think. Yeah, there's a slide missing, I don't know why. I can just, I think I...
You're five.
There it is. No, there's not a slide missing, okay. I thought I had written something different. There we go. So in six through eight, again, the focus for Fine Arts is Arts for All. So we offer grade-level chorus, grade-level band, everything's performance-based. All students are exposed to the arts, art, physical art. And as you see in the art show at the end of the year and in the individual projects at each school, music and art is really phenomenal in the district. I'm really proud of the music and art staff. I hit it twice. There we, come on. There it is, yay. High school, we do have a lot going on down our end of the building. We just had our chorus concert last night. The middle school and high school chorus has performed. I had 133 high school students on stage. And I will tell you that my largest section is my guys. I'm very proud of that. The middle school had their three grade-level choruses for trimester one. And I heard bits and pieces because I'm dealing with my kids. And the concert was phenomenal. I was very pleased with the outcome. And tomorrow, no, today's Tuesday. Thursday night, my week is all messed up. Thursday night, we have the band concert, the middle school bands and the high school band. And I did hear the high school band practicing today on stage and they sounded great. So really pleased with that. The art teacher does a mini-festival at one of our concerts. Each tries to expose the work of the kids. And I did get a chance to just quickly peek at it last night. And I'm really, again, really proud and pleased as to what comes out of the schools. I can't say enough for the work that the Fine Arts staff does in the Auburn schools. There we go. I'm not going to go through everything here. This is just our basic support cost. The things that I'll highlight is the supplies are going into the building budget, so you'll see those in the individual building budgets. Everything else is pretty much status quo. We do have to keep our band uniforms fresh because we do get new kids. We need different sizes. That represents about five band uniforms every year. Sometimes they get destroyed, not destroyed, but sometimes they'll, something will happen. Someone will spill something or rip something and they have to be replaced, even though they're only two years old, but we still have to keep them going. Band equipment, same thing. That is for pretty much marching band, very expensive. Drum heads and things like that that we have to replace yearly because they do take a lot of abuse. Or the drum carriers, they take a lot of abuse. So that's sort of an ongoing expense. Everything else is pretty much status quo. If you have any questions?
Any questions, comments? Nothing?
I'm not going to present the athletic budget.
Come on. No, I think, I don't think we have any questions. Great presentation. Thank you. Keep up the good work. We look forward to the concerts and staying in the marching band.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
As you can tell, I'm not Mr. Davis. Mr. Hanfield presenting on behalf of Mr. Davis. He is representing the administration at the girls' field hockey state semifinal game, which they won, won nothing in overtime. So they will play Saturday against an opponent to be determined. So that is exciting. Every year when we come here and we talk about the athletic budget, we talk about what's our community. And here are some bulleted, some points, just some of the things that we've done in our community with our athletes this year. The annual David Broder Memorial Klepto 5K road race in 2015, this past October. We had quite a few student athletes and teams participating in the breaking up and the setting up of that event. And it was another success. We're taking our captains, as a matter of fact, tomorrow to a leadership conference. It's not on here, at the Hanover in Worcester. And just recently, our captains of our varsity athletic teams created and supported a fundraiser in honor of a former Auburn high athlete, Nicky Bertheum, who's lost her arm in a Boeing accident over the summer. And there are future initiatives. I know Mr. Davis has planned for the student athletes in our building. Just some quick facts in terms of, you know, what does the composite group look like of our student athletes in the classroom? 55 to 60% of our students are our National Art Society members. Approximately 46% of our student athletes are enrolled in at least one AP course. And MIAA has stringent guidelines for academic requirements for our students to maintain their status on a team. And our students, year after year, meet those academic requirements with flying colors. So we're very proud of the fact that they're able to excel both on the athletic field and in the classroom as well. Just some quick accomplishments. This goes back to last year. Field hockey continues their run of success. Girls soccer, football, all having success. Indoor track, indoor track, cheerleading, indoor track, girls' indoor track, girls' basketball. Quite a wide variety of sports, baseball, softball, boys' tennis. All enjoying excellent seasons and going deep into our district playoff run. So again, our students are doing excellent in the classroom. They're doing excellent on the athletic fields. And we're very proud of that. In terms of athletic department initiatives for the upcoming year and into next year, Mr. Davis is looking to create an Auburn Middle School Student Recognition Night. This spring, we are excited to welcome a junior varsity boys and girls' lacrosse program that we're looking to see go to the varsity level in the spring of '17. In addition, club teams for the middle school and high school. Essentially intramurals for kids who don't participate in varsity athletics or sub-varsity athletics. And Mr. Davis is looking at ways that he can increase available funds from his revolving account from utilizing the facility. account from utilizing the facility. The budget that Mr. Davis has created is representative of these bullets you'll see here. So, over the past few years, there's always been shortfalls in transportation and game official funding. We always manage to plug those gaps with year-end kind of shuffling of monies. There's a general trend that shows an increase in the costs of uniforms and equipment. He had always added, and you'll see in the budget lines, some requests for additional uniforms or replacement, I should say, uniforms and equipment, and there'll be some additional uniforms for lacrosse. Professional development for coaching staff, and then, you know, as I said, within the next year, we're gonna have many teams that will be needing replacement of uniforms as well. So, the next page is last year's athletic budget and then what is proposed for this fiscal year. I won't go through everything here, but as you can see, things are pretty much the same. You see increases and some decreases in different lines, but by and large, you know, the line items, you know, pretty much remain unchanged. Any increases, or actually, it looks like he's even showing a decrease, would be reflective of additional ice time, additional officials' fees due to the adding of new sports. The officials also raised their prices at the dollar or two here and there, and then swiggle doos, but for the most part, that's what you've seen in the past. So, if there's any particular questions, I'm happy to answer those. If Mr. Davis, maybe you can answer some questions, or he's happiest to sit there too, I think, so.
Any questions, comments?
I have a question through the chair. What is the plan, how do you plan on increasing available funds through facility rentals? You gonna advertise, or?
Gonna throw some parties.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm running a little late, but I had a couple of other items I had to take care of. As far as increasing our revenue, last year, we had the athletic fields plowed in the spring, and colleges rented out the baseball field mostly. So, depending on the winter, if it's anything like last year, which obviously we hope it's not, then that the field is in demand. So, that's, that would be one way. Also, you know, the gymnasium, the new middle school, people have been quiet already about renting that out as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm through the chair. I just have one question, only because you noted that there were shortfalls in transportation and game official funding. I just noted that they seem to be, it's very small print on here though, so I apologize when I'm not reading straight. They seem to be, you're just requesting level funding. Is that, do you feel that that will meet your needs? I mean, I know Casey said that you're able to shuffle funds around to usually meet your needs. I just wanna make sure that you're asking for them.
Yeah, well, for example, like with the transportation, just with, you know, you never know from one year to the next as far as district play with our tournaments, so that would also increase, you know, the transportation rates. You know, just for example, with the field hockey, you know, which is great, they want to get tonight, you know, give, gets four extra bus trips going into Saturday, as well as other teams. So, I mean, that is something that, you know, you budget a little bit for, but you just never know how far the team is gonna go.
As long as you feel that it's manageable, even with, you know, just asking for the same amount, that's really just what I'm thinking. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question concerning intramurals. I think it's a great idea at both levels, at the middle school and the high school, and you obviously would be the ultimate director of that. Who would be chaperoning the kids when they're playing these sports? Would that be a paid position, or is that a volunteer position?
Well, obviously, it'd be nice if we could get some volunteers to do it. So, I guess that would be the, you know, that would be the ideal situation. I'm just not so sure. Whatever time I can, I can give, I would do that.
Well, if it's something that's gonna take off, then, you know, it's definitely gonna happen. I'd like to see a line item in there, possibly for a stipend for someone who's sports-minded, who may wanna watch the students compete in basketball and whatever it might be. I don't know if we're talking about officials, or we're talking about someone from the school that would go there and kind of look after things, but I think someone, I think if we want it to work, we should make sure that there's a line item in there to pay for that.
It would be, it would be helpful if we did have someone from the school that probably is familiar to students. That would make the transition a lot easier.
Yeah, that's my point, someone who wants to stick around for an extra hour and a half after school, but just something to think about now. I wouldn't mind seeing that piece in there.
Yeah, I don't think we can assume that volunteers are gonna just step up to do it, so.
Casey, any thoughts on that?
No, I would, I mean, I would agree, I think, I think obviously anytime, you know, there's this financial, you know, benefit as well, you're able to entice more volunteers than you would if not. I would envision that perhaps being, you know, in this Dr. Brunel's ultimate decision, but I would agree with the line item, the funding mechanism of that, you know, it could be through an appendix C thing or something, you know, we could work out that, I'm sure. But, I think for the oversight of it, and I think, once you see the development of it and what sports are gonna be offered and things like that, I think from a liability standpoint, I think from, you know, it just makes sense that we have someone there. The other thing is, if, you know, it's intramurals, we still kind of want someone there who knows the games too, and can help the kids. Because for some of these kids, you know, the intramurals is a vehicle for them to get better, you know, perhaps to, you know, join a varsity or sub-varsity experience. So, yeah, it always does help.
I think it's a great idea, right? It's gonna get them off the video games, and it's gonna keep them at school a little bit longer and being active, as you say. But, yeah, let's, and I'm not saying that it needs to be per diem, it's not actually, it's not actually correcting papers and doing that type of extracurricular work, it's out there having fun, so we may be able to do it for a shorter stipend. But, I wouldn't mind saying something now, if the board is in agreement with that.
I agree, yeah.
Sure, I carry those at that. I'm sure we'll be back before you, no matter how many times. As we always are.
Once or twice, yeah. Okay, great, thank you.
Three or four times. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, great.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that actually concludes the presentation's budget presentations for tonight. The principals will come back tomorrow evening, so unless you have questions for any of them tonight, they're all gonna be coming back tomorrow with supporting the comments too.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you. Well done.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the presentation and the support.
I don't think I have to say a secret. It's true. It's very true. Yeah. Yeah, you're gonna have to, you know, this is the paper, that's sealed. Okay. Yeah, why don't we do that? Page four, Destination Lacrosse, if that's okay with the committee?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, so I'm gonna introduce.
Okay, moving on.
So, the next item, we have with us this evening, there was a request that came forward from Mr. Tom Fitzmaurice from Destination Lacrosse regarding the potential rental of at least one or perhaps both, or more than one of our turf fields. He is looking to bring in a large-scale lacrosse tournament to the city of Worcester, has secured some rental of some Worcester fields, I believe already, please put the lights on. Thank you. And has mentioned is seeking a reduction from you. He has proposed $175 per hour plus the $30 an hour rental fee. Our normal fee, the fee that's been set by school committee is $250 an hour. Our fields currently are not lined for lacrosse, so we would need to take care of that, and Destination Lacrosse would pay that charge as well, as well as the site managers. So, with your permission, I'll turn it over to Mr. Fitzmaurice, who can share a little bit more information, and then it will ultimately be a decision of the school committee whether to keep the fee at the price you've set, or to change it, and again, it's for April 2nd and 3rd in the spring of '16.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the time. It was a perfect segue, Brian talking about new revenue to the schools. Long story short, it's a fairly large lacrosse tournament, it's already coming here, it's coming to the universities in Worcester Academy. It's Warrior World Series of Uofa Lacrosse, which is subsidiary at New Balance, and Jim Davis is the CEO, he's a Worcester guy. So, long story short is, I'm thinking long-term, I'm thinking, it's a unique challenge, when I met this gentleman, he wanted to have the event, you know, ideally in Lancaster, but the reality is, it's the Northeast, there's no fields in Massachusetts that are housed in one complex. So, and that's obviously the most cost-effective option for him, is to find that, but it doesn't exist. So, I came up with this creative solution for him to, you know, there are 1,300 kids, it's about 1,700 hotel rooms over two days, stretching as far as NADA, because we're pretty compressed between Auburn and Worcester. Every hotel in Auburn is getting a piece of that pie as well, regardless of whether they play here. It's just an opportunity to grow the playing field, and I'm just trying to help the client keep that price as low as possible. And I, well, I'm just, I'm sorry, just real quick, and Mr. Davis talked about growing lacrosse. It's an emerging sport, it's one of the fastest-growing sports in the country. Obviously, the town has an interest in growing Uofa lacrosse, and like I said, this is an opportunity to kind of be that conduit to get it going.
Well, we certainly have an interest in all things athletics. My concern is, even town-wide, where people have come to us to lower fees, my answer has been, if your particular organization is doing well, then you should be able to afford our rates. If they're not doing well, maybe you're not charging enough of a fee, and that's, and if we have a set price, then we don't have to backpedal next time either someone from town or out of town comes to us. So, I'm comfortable with the cost that's being charged now. Yeah, it's, I believe that we've got premium facilities and locations, so I still think it's a fairly good deal, and we're not looking to go down with the local colleges, as we talked about when they come to use our baseball fields, because if we put it out there once, I feel like that's what's gonna happen in the spring. Well, we've been good customers. These lacrosse people just came in this one time. Can you drop our fee down a couple hundred dollars? That's just my opinion, and I obviously don't speak for the board. Any comments, questions?
I mean, I actually agree, I'm by no means a field maintenance expert, so I just have to trust that the reason the fee was set at that is because we have to take care of ourselves in the future, those projected maintenance costs.
And I agree. And I agree with your statement.
But not to diminish at all what you're gonna be doing.
Oh, no, 100%, I got that. It's just, I'm advocating for him, it's, you know, like I said, I'm trying to keep his cost of business down as low as possible, because like I said, there's nothing that exists, you know, in this region particularly, where he can house a cost-effective event. So, this is my creative solution, and, you know, I've come to terms with all the other venues in the city of Worcester, and then trying to blank out the high school, the regional Massachusetts.
Yeah.
So, I'm in preliminary talks with them as well about a decreased fee. It's just exploratory.
Yeah.
Like I said, they'll be coming here regardless, so.
Well, don't take it the wrong way.
Oh, no.
We would love, we would love to have you, we'd love to see our programs grow as well, I think it'd be great, and possibly our kids competing in these tournaments in the future. It's just that, I don't think that we wanna, it's not precedent that we wanna set at this time.
Sure.
So, are there any other questions or comments?
No, I agree.
Well, we do appreciate you needing coming, and do you need a vote, or you need?
We don't through the chair, because what I understand is, you're actually agreeing to leave the fee as it was established, and if Mr. Fitzmaurice, as representative of Destination Lacrosse, wants to continue at that rate, then there really would be no vote we need to take. So, you can just be in touch with us if you'd like to.
Sure, and one point I wanted to establish as well is, I'm fairly new into this role, I'm about seven months into this role. I'm not from Worcester, I'm from eastern Massachusetts, so, you know, I'm learning everything that goes into these things as it comes, and I wanted to establish a longstanding relationship, because, you know, we simply don't have facilities that exist in central Massachusetts in order for me to be successful. My organization, and I'm sorry, it's Destination Worcester. Soon as you visit central Massachusetts, but that's another. But, yeah, like I said, and it's like anything, it's just creating these relationships, so I can go out and sell this region and bring, you know, economic development here, so through sport. So, I appreciate your time.
We appreciate your time, and hopefully we didn't disappoint, you're still welcome to, Mr. Bridge.
If you're gonna do it in minutes, could you put it in a minute saying that the whole committee had decided not to do it?
It will be in a minute.
Okay, no, just asking.
We appreciate you coming in.
Sure, I appreciate having you.
Would love to have you, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back. And finish with this.
Thank you, yeah, so, just to remind you, Mrs. Worzbicki did attend the budget kickoff on November 4th. We actually included in your pack, and I think we do this annually, the documents that Mr. Kasnovich presented through the finance committee that evening. Much of what is in here, at least in portions, was shared at the collaborative meeting that we held back a couple of months ago with the FinCom and Board of Selectment as well. Also, wanted to provide for you the final report of the Foundation Budget Review Commission. We've shared with you preliminary reports along the way, and did also wanna share with you that through Senator Moore's office, through one of his representatives in his office, reached out that if any of you had any questions, he wanted to be sure that you all had received this. What is uncertain at this point is when any of these recommendations may go into effect. So, as Mrs. Worzbicki had noted during the budget presentation, we have not included any anticipated growth in revenues due to this until we know, because obviously, it's gonna need to be funded at the legislative level. So, we'll continue to keep you apprised of it, but I think that, you know, as we've shared before, it does recognize that the original funding formula that was created is outdated in many areas, particularly with special education and health insurance. And those are two of the findings in here that they really emphasize. So, if you have any questions going forward with this, we can certainly bring information more back to you. As more comes out from the state, we can share that, and if you have any interest in inviting Senator Moore at a future meeting, we can certainly do that too.
Any questions, comments? I would say, if Senator Moore has something to comment on after they've met, absolutely we would have met, but if there's not much to update on at this point, we'll hold out.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. The next item too, I wanted to share with you is, we had made you aware, on December 3rd, actually, of last year, that the ACLU had requested information, there was a neighboring school district who had been outreach by the ACLU, because they thought that their implementation of the iPad initiative was unfair. In summary, they were charging students of families who were eligible to pay and not charging others, and the ACLU took exception with that. So, then as part of that outreach, they contacted numerous districts with a public information request, and I had shared that with you, in fact, it was that very day when we had received it. So, as part of that, recently, Dr. Lozey, Mr. Bouvier attended a meeting, and Mr. Bouvier commented on this, that student privacy and rights to privacy and student data, especially as we go more electronic and with information in the cloud and such, and different software packages, attended a meeting recently, and this report was shared, and as you will see in reviewing through it, Auburn was cited, along with a number of other districts, in a number of other areas. So, I wanted to bring this to you. So I wanted to bring this to your attention. Wanted to let you know that Mr. Bouvier and Dr. Lozey and myself and others will really be digging deeply into this issue. For the most part, it's issues around making sure that our policies are very explicit and that parents know going in what the standard that their child will be held to. We have stated in our documents that students should not have an expectation of privacy when they look at their iPads. We would only view that if there was suspicion of any illegal or inappropriate behavior. That's a right I would say that I think we want to maintain as a school district, you know, in terms of oversight. So know that we are taking this seriously. We're looking through it and as this work and part of it will be with the tech committee, we'll certainly keep you apprised as we go forward.
Any questions or comments on that? Nope, seeing none.
The next item under, thank you, Mr. Bouvier, under new business, Mr. Fahy had made mention of this, that in order to actually add a transformer, what national, at Packard School, what national grid requires is an easement and it is the Board of Selectmen who actually sign off on it. You put in here the sample of this. But I didn't want Mr. Fahy or I to go to the Board of Selectmen without first making you aware of it. I did speak with Town Manager Jacobson about this actually at the Fall Special Town Meeting and she indicated that it was a fairly routine expectation. They just want to be sure that they are covered, they've already done the tree trimming, but once this gets approved and signed off by them, then national grid can come in and can tune about $37,000 to add this transformer, which then our district electrician will hook up to the building. That will allow the HVAC system to fully operate and will be up to speed. So it'll be done well in advance of the return of warmer weather, something to look forward to, but just wanted to make you aware.
Any comments?
Yes, there's a light at the end of the tunnel.
There is. There are cold fans, yes. There is.
Good.
Excellent. Great news.
The Worcester Youth Orchestra, and if you recall, this is actually their second season that has been with us. And as a school committee, you had set the rates for them to utilize the Auburn High School stage and auditorium when they have their holiday concert. In a recent communication with Mr. Bernard, who is the executive director, he reached out and each year, so it's a free holiday concert for people in Auburn to go and attend. What they're proposing is that they request, so it's free to attend, but that for families, they do suggest a donation by family. And what they've decided is that 50% of all donations collected would be donated to Auburn Youth and Family Services, which is great and certainly benefits our children and our families. They also wondered if the committee would be inclined to waive the fee, the building rental fee for that night only, with the stipulation that instead of paying the district that money, that money would go directly to Auburn Youth and Family Services. So the concert is planned for December 19th and my understanding, I was not able to attend last year, but was very well attended. And I think with having the Worcester Youth Orchestra in Auburn, it gives an opportunity for our students who are musically inclined to take it to the next level. So I think that's an additional benefit that we have.
I think it's a great idea. It's a little different than what we just talked about a few minutes ago with La Crosse. We're talking about one of our own, very own organizations, a great organization, nonprofit who does so much, so, and I think it's a fantastic event and a way to raise some life for them. That's my opinion. Any comments, concerns?
The only thing I would say is that I went to the event last year and it was just unbelievable how good they were. I mean, it was great and I think it's worth doing it myself.
I agree. Any comments, concerns?
I agree. I mean, I like how they're giving back to the community at the same time, but I think we're going to get future requests for fees to be waived and I think we just need to be careful, you know?
No, absolutely. Like I said earlier, I don't like to set precedent, but we're talking about Auburn Youth and Family Services as we're all involved with them and we understand what they do, especially for the needy children in the community. It's so much in line with what we do. Sports are in line with what we do, but charity is really, I think, what this whole committee is about outside of committee activities. So it's really, I think it's a strong bond and a strong tie that we have with them. And I would caution anyone to try to compare themselves to Auburn Youth and Family Services when they come in here and try to have their rates dropped. Just my opinion.
Honestly, I agree with, I think it's very kind and generous.
But I definitely understand.
Yeah, I think we just need to be careful, that's all.
We will. We're setting precedent and I would challenge anyone to come in and again, say you did it for Auburn Youth and Family Services, you're going to, can you do it for us? They would have to put up a pretty good argument.
Well, that, it's, you know, it is something to do with in-town Auburn Youth and Family Services. They do a great job in what they do and it's good that we can turn around and help them. And like George had just said, it's a totally different avenue than what the La Crosse teams were looking for.
And on top of that, I'd like to publicly thank Fuller Automotive for helping out with this and ultimately it's going to help all the cards all the way around, so thanks to them. Great company. So I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve waiving of fee for Worcester Youth Orchestra's orchestra's rental of the AHS Auditorium on December 19th.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, but only because they're giving back to the community.
I think that's what the whole thing is about.
Well, I know, but the Worcester Youth Orchestra is not Auburn Youth and Family Services. It's a separate organization who's donating to Auburn.
Yeah, there's Auburn children involved.
Actually, if I can make a suggestion through the chair, I think my recommendation would be if you would agree to it, first Mr. Chair and then Mrs. Kaufman and Mr. Page, to have the motion read as it was noted in here, that with the proviso that 50% of collected donations received be donated to Auburn Youth as well as the value of the rental charge. So that waits in the official minutes of exactly what we're expecting of it. That way there's no question.
Okay. I would entertain that motion.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve waiving of fee for Worcester Youth Orchestra's rental of the AHS Auditorium on December 19th for their holiday concert, with the proviso that 50% of collected donations received that evening will be donated to Auburn Youth and Family Services as well as the value of the rental charge of $282.75 that will be waived.
Second.
Second, but question?
Yep.
Do we have to go back and get rid of the first motion that we did? It's already been voted on? Or are we all set? Can we just vote on it?
It's a restatement of it. I think it's fine.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Most of.
So long as you keep your second.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
Keeping your second?
Yes, I am.
All right, perfect. Any other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The, I think you had indicated you'd like to hold off on the technology committee until tomorrow.
I would.
Okay.
As we're looking for a couple of volunteers for that.
Yes, so up to two volunteers through the chair for the committee for that, and the next meeting is not until December 3rd.
Just give that some thought. If there's anyone that would like to be a part of that committee, I don't know that Gil would like to or would not like to, but I'd just like to give her the opportunity, so we'll address that tomorrow.
Okay.
The next item, at the last committee, Mr. Cremon was here seeking approval of the field trip and if, as we know, the students from Madrid are expected to come in, but it would be after what is our scheduled June meeting. So my recommendation is that we reschedule the June 17th meeting to Wednesday, June 24th and that way they would be able to come in and as they've done in the past.
Okay. Reschedule June 17th to June 24th?
Assuming the committee agrees.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Seems like light years away, but sounds good.
I'll have something to do on the plane, but...
You've really got something with that light stuff today, don't you?
All in favor?
Aye.
This is a little... And moving on to upcoming events.
As we're fully engrossed in literacy month in November, I was at Packard today and they actually had their visit from, she's an Auburn resident, Kate Hanske, a local author. She visited Bryn Mawr School today and Mrs. Stanek was raving about her. In fact, in one of the second grade classes, they were talking about her visit and her, how many times she went back and I think what they said it was 100 different times to go back and to try and choose the exact word that she wanted to, to capture her feeling and stuff and really to drive home the point to children that books just don't come out the first time, that we need to go back and edit and things. So commend her for doing that and giving up her time to commit. This is not the first year she's done it. And then hard to believe is Thanksgiving is next week. We certainly express great thanks to the Auburn community and all of you for the support that we have and wish all of our families the wonderful support. I do also want to remind, and we put this in our latest email in terms of Auburn Youth and Family Services, that if there are families that are in need, particularly around the holidays, to be in touch with Auburn Youth directly and they do provide supports. Each of our schools and lots of our student groups adopt families, Central Office does here as well, and purchases gifts and things and food supplies and stuff to try and make sure that everybody's holiday is a merry one. So proud of the work that our team does on that.
Moving on to policies.
We have three policies here before you that you approved on first reading on October 26th, and it is my recommendation that you accept them on second readings, but they are officially approved.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion to approve both policies on second reading.
On the second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote. That's all we have for the season? Is this all you have, anything else for us?
Actually, I stand corrected. So I do want to share with you, I put your seats a press release, I apologize, that came out from the commissioner today. We actually participated in a webinar, supervising across the Commonwealth, that the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education did vote today, by a vote of eight to three, I believe, to go with the MCAS 2.0, the Next Generation Assessment. As part of the webinar that we had today, we'll get more details in writing, obviously. There's actually going to be conference calls taking place on Friday and Monday early next week to share more information. But districts who took PARK, and Auburn was one of those this past school year, we would take PARK again this spring. School districts that took MCAS will have the opportunity to opt into taking PARK this spring while the new test is being developed. The plan right now is that in the spring of 2017, they would have this new assessment ready for rollout. It would have many PARK-like features to it as they described. They really are encouraging districts, and Auburn was one of them, who already embraces to do this electronically. It has multimedia components to it. I honestly don't understand how children could be fairly assessed on a paper and pencil task if they require multimedia components, and that was supported by the school committee right from the start. As part of Commissioner Chester's webinar today, he indicated that one proviso of the vote by the board, which was his original recommendation, but they added one proviso. So as we were this year, districts who took PARK in '15, I should say, this past spring, are being held harmless. So our status, our accountability status is a level two. Even if our scores don't match that, we can't go down in status. That proviso will stay in place for '16 as well, but also indicated that the board had decided, because it would be the first year that it would count in the spring of 2017, that likewise districts could not go down in accountability level. So that was new information that came out of the board meeting in the webinar was at three. I anticipate we'll hear more information about it over the coming days, but this was a last-minute change, I would say, in terms of the past few weeks and things, but I suspect this Next Generation Assessment will look far more like PARK than it did like MCAS, quite honestly. But the reason being, they want Massachusetts to maintain more control of what they're providing. He did indicate that through the 2018 administration, they would provide a pencil and paper option for districts, but that by 2019, the expectation is that all districts be ready to go electronic with this. And the words were that they would work with districts to help them secure funding, whether through V-Ray or otherwise. So I suspect that's going to pose a significant challenge to many districts across the Commonwealth. So how that rolls out remains to be seen, but as more information becomes available, I'll share it, but I just wanted you to be aware that that was the vote of the board today.
Any comments, questions? That's your motion to adjourn.
Make that motion to adjourn.
On the second?
On the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, everyone.
Thank you.